Okay, now that makes sense.
What's that?
My computer keeps trying to shut down.
Is that over here, gents? We all ready?
Oh, it's done.
We'll call this meeting door to the City Council. It's 5:30. Welcome. I've asked Mr. Dan Wheeler to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wheeler. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Everyone is present, and we do have one.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. I'd like to make one change to that agenda. If you'll look on the second page, we have Resolution 2308, and then an executive session. I'd like to move that executive session to prior to Resolution 2308, if everybody's okay with that, and we'll discuss that further in that executive session. But with that change, if everybody's comfortable with it, I'll entertain a motion to approve it with that change.
I'll make that motion with that change.
Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Sellers, seconding. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda with that amendment. The council minutes for January 3rd. Questions, comments, concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go to the work session of January 10. Same thing there. Any concerns or discussion regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well, and we'll go on to the bills. You have a warrant register with today's date on it? Questions, comments, concerns?
Smaller than some.
Yes, that's true. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Financial, revenue and expenditure report for November. You have that on your screen as well? Any discussion regarding that report?
Thanks for getting it out to us early.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor. I'll second.
Mr. Perks, motion. Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Dean?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Perks?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Moving pretty fast. Mr. Welling?
I'd just like to congratulate Heather Blackwell. She's a choir teacher at the high school. She was recognized for 25 years of service, but she's also voted the Southwest District Educator of the Year and State of Wyoming Music Educator of the Year, and that's pretty impressive. They're up and shared in the All-State Choir, which I was a member of years ago, so.
You'll sing to us, then?
I don't sing anymore, so.
I heard you sing just the other day.
I know, but I retired again.
That was a quick retirement. Perfect. Mr. Sellers, what do you have for us tonight?
So, just a couple things. I had a call with Mark DiSaro today, and if you don't know, at that time, first and second reading of SWAT had passed the House, and it was the one first vote was 60 to 2, so things were good. And he made a comment that it wouldn't have made it without the support of the municipalities, and that especially the letter that Mayor Williams and several of the other community mayors signed. So, I'm glad to see that happening. I think it's a big boost for us and for our community and for the state as a whole, and so hopefully it continues. Then I'd also like to shout out to a couple of small businesses. I'm not going to name them because I'm not sure if I'm allowed to, but I had a project that I needed done, and our businesses in town are wonderful, and they stepped up and they fixed my problem and solved an issue that I was having, and I'm grateful to live here and I'm grateful for the business and the business people that I get to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
I'm wondering if I can chance get probably as more than I realize is right. Is there any way to get the council back at least 24 hours prior to, at least 48 to 72 hours before? It's a lot for me. Like, yesterday was at 1:43, I get the email of 63 pages, especially of financial documents that I need to research and go through to try to educate myself and bring me out of the suite so I can ask questions if I need to, or if I can add and be more of a contribution. Just a little difficult with the full work schedule, obviously, and then it was up till 2:00 AM and we threw stuff.
That's a good question. I know that we've got some constraints as to the timeframe that someone can put items on the agenda, and that gives us a little bit of a, that kind of hamstrings us to a certain extent. Ms. Harris, do you want to try to?
So usually, we, there's, all the departments contribute something to the agenda, like, engineering has a lot of things, Trudy has things. So, everybody has things. So, they normally don't, so then I get all that information. Amanda gets information. She has to write resolutions, and then I get the information, and we have to get all the documents together. Normally, we don't get that information even at the end of the week before the meeting. So, it kind of gets backlog with what everybody else has to do before we see it. So, I get them out as fast as I do once I have everything, but we don't get everything quickly.
Doesn't the statute say you have to have it 24 hours in advance?
You have to post it on.
Yeah, it has to be posted, so. It does sometimes, you know, feel like a lot, like drinking through firehose. I know exactly what you're saying, and I do know our folks get things out as quick as they can, and it's a difficult thing all the way around. But I appreciate the comment. We'll do the best we can.
We used to copy everything, so instead of getting it digitally, you would get a big packet of paper, and that was difficult, too. And so, we didn't, we started doing it digitally. We thought that would be faster. And there are times when you'll get it, like on Friday, but that's usually about earliest that, because all the rest of the information doesn't come in. And I, you know, I don't know, we've thought about, like, putting a deadline on, you know, what, when, when's the last day you can turn something in, and if it's not in, then you have to wait for two more weeks. But that doesn't work. They, you know, people need their documents and their resolutions passed. So, I know it's not, I know it's, this one was a lot of information and very short timeframe.
Mine's been college.
Sometimes it does. Exactly right.
And it does get easier.
Yeah, it does. It does. I appreciate the comment, though. Appreciate all the comments.
And they're good. If you have a question, they're good to call during the day.
Absolutely.
What did she said during the day, about 9:30 or 10:00?
Well, I don't know. Trudy seems to be working all the time, too.
I know, I know that if you sent an email, it would be answered, you know, first thing in the morning, as soon as they got it. That's been my experience, so. There's something, it's kind of one of those things. We do the best we can.
Yep.
Yep. Appreciate that, though. We have some appointments to consider under our public hearings and special orders. Do you, what's your pleasure there? You want me to tell you what I got in mind all at once, or you've got it in front of you? Are you comfortable with that? We've got several boards. This is the time of year when we consider appointments and reappointments to the several boards, or a few of the several boards that we have as a city. And I would like to put forth and appoint Dan Wheeler to continue his service on the Lodging Tax Board for a three-year term to end January of 2026. I'd like to bring forth the name of Nathan Preet to serve on the Urban Renewal Agency Board for a five-year term to end January 2028. That's also a reappointment. Then, I would like to bring forth the name of Ben Bell to be a new appointment to the UNA County Economic Development Commission. That'd be a three-year term to end January 2026, as well as the reappointment of Dan Wheeler to that same commission for the same term to end January 2026. If someone would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, motion. Mr. Welling, seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Thank you for your.
Appreciate all of those individuals.
Good people.
All too often, those are thankless jobs, but critical nonetheless, so thank you. Further discussion?
I think Dan's critical on that economic development board.
I know he is.
I agree. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. And thank you to those that are here to accept and have offered up that willingness to serve. We have no consent agenda, nor do we have any unfinished business. We'll go to some new business, and we'll consider a motion to install some conduit. Who's our, if Mr. Barker quit you on, and he'd come, tell us what we're doing here.
Good evening. We have two items we have for the same conduit project. Motion to award and then enter into a contract through a resolution. We designed and bid out the plans in-house. Me and Bob cranked out some plans and specs. This is for, to loop through three-phase power through the Union Center Business Park, from the golf course down to the clubhouse down to carbon fiber. There is power on kind of both ends, but they need to, we can only do so many businesses on a dead-end service before we had to loop that through. And so, this is kind of critical infrastructure to complete that business park and to be able to, you know, we got ISA, hopefully starting construction this spring, so we need to try to get ahead of them before they have a building without power. So, we got to, so this is conduit. We worked with Rocky Mount Power. We were in charge of putting in the conduit and the vaults. They will come through later and pull the wire and set the transformers. But we received two bids. SCI Inc., their local company out of Lyman, see their bid was $456,925. Probst Electric out of Heber City also bid on the project. They were $683,126, so SCI was quite a bit lower. I checked with Rocky Mount Power on some of their unit prices, and they said, yeah, those are kind of in line with what we've been getting lately. As anything, their costs have been kind of exponentially increasing, so it's kind of hard to get a fix on how much. But these, like I said before, these vaults are, you know, $30,000 each. We need six of them. There's no other way around it, and so it is an expensive project just to pull six-inch conduit. But it's critical infrastructure to, you know, like I said, to bring businesses in that business park.
This might be a little bit off, but where are we at on, like, fiber and all that stuff? If you're laying a conduit, would it be a good time to lay fiber or anything else?
Yeah, and that's a good point. Probst Electric came in. They were the low bidder, low bid, and we put in three inch and a quarter, one inch and a quarter diameter conduit in 2017. So, the conduit's in. We put that in five years ago or so. All West has fiber through there, and CenturyLink has come back through the other way from the Roundhouse back to, I think, I believe Clean Energy Building.
Okay.
I believe. So, yeah, so, yeah, it would be good to do it all at the same time. That's a good point. In the same trench, but fiber is already installed.
It's already round.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And maybe in hindsight, we could have ran conduit at the same time for power, you know, back. But that was kind of an agreement we had with All West, and it was kind of a good deal that we had with them back then to do that.
I think the way that we looked at the fiber was, it was just a good deal at the moment, and we jumped on the opportunity that we had to drag the fiber in then.
Yeah.
It was probably funded through government that picked Spain. When did we do that?
We did the fiber probably.
2017. It was right when I got here. Brian Honey had done the design already, so it was right when I first got here. And, yeah, I believe they paid for two-thirds of the project because they took ownership of two of the conduits.
Always.
And we actually still own one of the conduits for another provider, you know, but we could sell that to another provider someday, but it's too small for power.
And it's, the power's from, what'd you say, the golf course and the carbon fiber going to pull from?
Yeah. Yeah, they'll loop it through from the clubhouse down to carbon fiber.
We've had a lot of businesses, as you mentioned ISA and hopefully Avalon.
Yeah.
But at any rate, we've got several properties in there that are being looked at very frequently, and we need to be, we need to be out ahead of what opportunities present themselves when they do so. Yeah, it's an expensive project, but it's, in my mind, it's critical to be ready for development opportunities when they come.
And it was good how that was phased through because Rocky Mount Power let so many businesses be on the dead-end line, like carbon fiber and the Clean Energy Building, until that third business came online, then we're on the hook to loop it through. So, we have got by quite a few years with just the dead-end lines.
I think more of the utilities that are on site on any of those properties makes it easier to market, too.
Yeah. And as we know, we've spent a lot of money putting water and sewer and, you know, secondary water down there to the business park and just part of the infrastructure. It's kind of the last thing. Build a very expensive big road, so.
Absolutely. Well, is there a motion to award that bid, the SCI?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Lynn with a motion.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Mr. Burke, seconding. Discussion. What's that?
I'm sorry?
We have worked with SCI on several projects, and they're a competent company, a local, which is good, local company, you know, within the county, and they do a good job in having equipment and manpower. And he told me that the vaults are in stock, so he could get going on it right away, so.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Dean. And then we'll, relative to that, we'll go to Resolution 2306. Ms. Kirby, will you read that title for us, please?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of an agreement with SCI Incorporated for the installation of power conduit within the Evanston Union Center.
Thank you.
Usually, we would do a notice of award this meeting, and then two weeks, once we had, and that would get them kicked off so they could get their bonding and insurance in line, because it is a cost to them to get their bonding, performance, and payment bonds in line. I did these together tonight just to expedite that contingent that we get the bonding and insurance. You know, we won't sign off or kick them off until we get that, but this will give them the opportunity to get going faster and not have a special meeting next week.
Sounds good to me. Is there any introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
And the completion date for this is end of March, is what we've given them to get.
Fast-moving project for the most.
Yeah, you know. The good thing is, it's not within the roadway, and a lot of it's being bored. And so, I asked him about the frost and that, and seen if he wanted to wait a little in spring, and he said it's no difference to them. They can dig right through it and.
It hasn't been driven on, or that, it's probably not, once they bust through the crust.
He said about a foot down, and they're fine, so.
Okay. Resolution 2307. Ms. Kirby, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston approving a change order number one for the 18th, 19th, and West Summit Water Replacement Project in the City of Evanston.
Thank you.
So, as you know, we awarded two projects for waterline projects last year to Lewis and Lewis. They were able to do the Sage Street one, those two blocks. 18th and 19th Street is a big project, and they weren't able to get all the parts. Hydrants were nine months out, things like that. And so, now they've purchased all the material. We've approved that, and so this, we need to extend the completion date exactly one year beyond when the completion was for the project.
So, this change order just simply adds to the timeframe?
It's a change in time, yeah. No cost to it at this point. Yeah, so Forest Green Engineering went over and took pictures of everything over in Green River in the yard, made sure it was covered and locked up, so.
Thank you. Is there any introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion.
When we replace these water lines, I've seen when we replace the water lines, like at City View and stuff, is the idea to replace the entire paving on the road, or just dig it up and then patch it?
No, we usually keep them as close to the shoulder as we can, and try to keep it, limit it to like about a third of the pavement of the street. But, yeah, I mean, City View, that was a different story because we went in, we knew that we're replacing the entire roadway, and so that's why that's such a hack job, is because we knew that we were coming in and replacing, I mean, it's a year out still, but we knew we were repaving the entire thing. 18th and 19th Street, we'll, you know, we'll have to make sure that the patching is, not that we didn't on City View, but in a way that's going to be more long-term.
That's what I was going to say. I just worry about long-term on the road.
Yeah.
Because if we dig it up and then patch it, and then the long-term.
Yeah, and that's a good point. We could, you know, and we could, when we patch these, and then we could schedule overlays, you know, to coincide with these, so.
Hate watching us do jobs twice.
Yeah, nope, for sure. And that's, and I know a lot of people have been frustrated with City View because of the state that it's been in, but it's hard not to throw good money after bad on that project, because we should have overlaid it four years ago, but then to do a total rebuild on that lower half would have been a waste of the overlay.
Yeah, well, Whiteout's going to help us with City View, and so we want them to spend their money on it instead of ours, but.
When's '24?
2024 is when, yeah.
But then, when you talk about these projects, and that's an excellent question, Mr. Lynn, you're also, we also need to consider that we're actually talking about two different budget efforts. In that, a street overlay or street repair, those expenditures would have to come out of our general fund, general fund budget, and then the waterline, those kinds of projects come out of our enterprise funds. And so, we intermingle, am I not, if I misspeak, line me out, but if we intermingle those two funds, we have to be careful because our enterprise funds are directly for that purpose, whereas our, but they don't cover roads, don't cover pavement, don't cover road construction or repair. But, and so those come out of our general funds, and our enterprise funds, we're fairly healthy. Our general funds is where we feel the limits of our.
I would love it if the auditors would let us overlay with the enterprise funds, because we have a lot, we could do a lot more.
What you almost hope for is a waterline, I shouldn't even say this, a waterline break that takes out the whole road.
Yeah.
Then, then you could do it that way.
I have heard of cities before that have placed a tax or some kind of fee on streets like that, and so it's almost like an enterprise fund for streets, and it was not received well in those communities.
But that's, excellent question, but that's why, that's why sometimes we're hampered.
I understand all that. I just, you know, if we don't have plans in the future down the road to redo those streets, is there extra care we can take that, you know?
Yeah. No, and Sage Street's the exact same point. I mean, we have a patch there now, you know, and so those are another joint, another place for water to get in, another opportunity to crack and have issues, and so, you know, our maintenance issues that we got to deal with, for sure.
Excellent. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Now, I guess we entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling? Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We'll go into executive session, and we'll be back in a bit. If you'll excuse us for a little bit.